Call the meeting to order. Rice with the pledge. Ellen, do you want to lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Let me lead it to the flag from the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, our nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No one to silence, please. Thank you. And remind everybody that tonight is a special meeting. The only business that can be conducted is what's on the agenda. First one is public's comment.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, would you like me to go to the podium?
Either your choice.
I'll go to the podium. Thanks.
Just remember to give your name and address, Pete.
Okay. Pete Bass, 31 Mount Tom Road. Chair, thank you. Just want to say I fully support this budget. I think there was a lot of hard work done by our department heads. A lot of work done on the Board of Ed district as well. I come tonight with some very, very good news. In speaking with our Board of Ed partners as well, as you all know, when we look at budgeting, especially for some of our fringe lines, one of the bigger drivers is our medical insurance. And obviously, we're forecasting, you know, sometimes nine, 12 months ahead of what we think is going to be true costs. Our actuary who came back with us, we were looking at, I think on the town side, Greg, right, we were looking at seven percent to begin with.
Overall.
Overall, yeah. And the board, I believe, was five or six, they can talk a little bit about that. We did have it that is actually going to go down from that projected to a three percent increase. And what does that mean? That means on the town side, it's $170,322 reduction. On the educational side, of which we've talked with our educational partners, it's $282,922. If the Board of Finance decides to take those as reductions, the mil rate that's currently proposed would then drop to 2.43 percent. And that's with both the town and the educational district combined. If you just take a quick look at the chart here, when you're looking at runs of the mil rate, because that's what we all really base these things on, is our mil rate. So we're going to look in the year 2020 with a 1.87 percent increase. I think a lot of times we forget during those COVID years, right? So in 2020, we actually had a mil rate jump to 2.09 percent. Then in 2022, 2021 was 2.09, 2022 with 2.47 percent decrease. 2023 was a 1.7 increase. 2024, 1.85. Average mil rate over five years was 2.572. So I think we've all done a great job, departments, both the educational side, the town side, all of our boards that go through all this stuff. I think that just shows some really good strategic planning that we've done, continue to do so. And any questions that the finance board will have when it comes to the town side, I'd be more than happy to answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. Katie Francis, 123 Candlewood Mountain Road, New Milford. I'm here as a resident, a taxpayer, vice chairman of our town council, and I want to make it very clear to our taxpayers at home and to this lovely Board of Finance that I 100% support the budget that our town council members agreed on and voted on. We heard 34, maybe it was 35 departments, over several days, give us every single dollar a justification of what it was for. We asked questions, we asked tough questions, and for those who say that some of these things are wants or toys, that is not at all the case. These are things that are needed, and they're not needed for them personally, they're needed for all of us, for the services they perform, for our police department, a fire department, our ambulance department, our road crews. So anything that they want or bring up and say that they need, there's a reason for it. And they stood here in front of us night after night, a month or so ago, and told us all about it. So I think the mayor's just shown our mil rate over five years is like a half of a percent, which is pretty amazing. This year, with a lot of things that we're needing to be taken care of, it's still going to be as low as possible. So I say to you, please give, I know you will, you've given a lot of consideration, you're going to go through it again, please realize that the council did their best, and I can't speak for all of them, but we all voted for it. So I think I would like very much to see you pass forward what we agreed on. And I thank you for all the time you guys put in, too. And thank you, Walter.
The Honorable Chris Cosgrove.
Good evening. And first thing I'd like to do is, I'm sorry, Chris Cosgrove, 143 Sunny Valley Road. So the first thing I'd like to do is thank all of you for volunteering and serving on the Board of Finance. It's certainly appreciated, and as a former member of the board, I understand a little bit of what you have in front of you tonight. Want to talk about the budgets, of course. I believe the town budget is fiscally responsible, and that's thanks to a lot of things. First and foremost, our town employees who help create efficiencies and which staves off headcount that we could have had in previous years and this year. And also, it keeps our operating expenses down. So thanks to them. I think also, there's some, you know, there's been discussion on how we employ our capital. And I think the way we've been doing it, using our capital reserves, which is a tried and true method in both business and municipal government, that helps save taxpayer funds. And it also is attractive to the financial markets who rate our financial health. And we're highly rated, and that certainly helps us when we go to market for money. And that's going to be even more important in the coming years, as we're going to have to spend literally millions of dollars on repairs to our school buildings, continue our road programs, our bridges. And I'm afraid if we radically change the way we fund our capital, that could jeopardize our ratings, and then our bond, it will cost us more for bonding. So I'm fully supportive of the town budget. As for the school budget, and anybody who knows me knows, I've been a critic of how the Board of Ed spends our money. Having said that, I think the budget process they use this year and the budget they came up with is reasonable. While I still think that they can operate more efficiently and spend less money while improving student achievement, that would really necessitate, I think, structural changes. And those aren't going to come overnight. But for the first time, in my experience with municipal government, we have a Board of Ed that is willing to sit down and discuss some of those changes. There's no guarantees, of course, but I think having the discussions are important. So, and I appreciate them for getting to this point. So I appreciate, again, your time, and I'm sure your deliberations will be open and honest. Thank you.
Is that the last speaker, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item three on the agenda. Release of $150,000 in the Board of Education Capital Reserve account for the completion of an evaluation and analysis of the HVAC system in all five schools pursuant to the state requirement for HVAC evaluations for all school buildings. Can I have a second, please? I noticed we have Superintendent Parlato and her staff and members of the Board of Ed here. You're invited to answer any questions that the board may have on this topic. Any discussion on this topic at all? Seeing none, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four. Discussion and action on a proposed budget of the town in New Milford totaling $120,081,045, bifurcated as follows. Each portion of the budget will be discussed and action taken separately. Town side of the budget totaling $46,618,536. Do I have a second to discuss? Any discussion on this or amendments?
So, if you don't mind. Could you put the five-year mil rate increase up there again?
Five-year?
Yeah, whatever was just up there a second ago, it was a useful slide.
I just pulled that out. Joe, I was going to put up the mil rate calculation.
You can do that, too. I was just going to talk about the mil rate increase, because it's an interesting thing, because I did, your department did actually, Director Osipau finally send, you know, a very long, right, five-year or so budgetary analysis, and the Board of Finance has five categories, which is great. Director Parlato, we got yours right away after we asked, or Superintendent Parlato. And, you know, even though we had, you know, let's say from 2021 to 2022, I have in the fiscal year actuals, right, a 2% reduction, the town spending actually went up 37, went up from 36, 36,600,000 to 37,499,000, right? So even though we had a reduction in the mil rate, the actual overall spending in the town went up. Do you recall in '21, '22, if there was any surplus spending that year?
There was a, that was a re-eval year, Joe, so.
Right, so, and the re-evaluation is more than likely what drove the mil rate reduction, right?
Correct.
But was there a surplus that year in spite of the reduction of the mil rate? Do you recall? I don't recall.
I'm sure there was. I don't know offhand what the dollar value was, but I'm sure there was.
Right. And then, you know, probably the same thing in the prior years, you know, it goes up to the mil rate, you know, is a nice thing to look at, but what's really important is the net change in spending, right, or the net change in taxation to the residents in New Milford, right? So what was, that year that we had a 2% mil rate reduction, was there an increase in the taxation to the individual town residents? Did the taxes go up?
When the values go up, there was an increase in value, so.
So even though we had a mil rate reduction, there could have been an increase in the tax bills sent to the residents?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, I was just curious about that. What was the change in the budget over the same period as a percentage change?
Joe, why are we doing a history that has no bearing on what we're doing tonight?
Because I'm curious, because it was an interesting slide.
Curious, I understand that.
And I think that it's pertinent to the conversation surrounding the budget. I'm just discussing.
I don't believe so, but that's, you know, we're here to determine the spending amount of that budget, not the historical spending of the budget. We need to talk about what's specifically on the agenda, which is the amount of money we need to approve for the budget. May I have questions about the town budget?
No, not at all, actually. I think that the departments gave a very thorough analysis of their budgetary requests.
Okay. Are there any amendments to this budget?
Ryan, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Because it does seem like we've run significant surpluses year on year, and it seems like this year we're maybe underestimating potential revenue. So I'm a little curious as to, I know Mr. Cosgrove talked about the capital reserve being important for bonding, but, you know, we're running, it looks like we've run, you know, seven, six, eight, 10% surpluses the last few years. And I would assume that, you know, based on what I've heard in the meetings, we're likely to run a surplus again.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you.
Make prayer.
Fabulous question. Where you're seeing some of the drivers of what we call surplus is unanticipated revenue that we get, which is very positive. So if you're going to look at last year's actuals, which I have right here, I can give you some of the things. So for instance, in our STIF account.
That's the State Investment Fund, for those who don't know what it is.
Yep, right. We had an additional, right, $1,410,033 that was unanticipated. And why I mean unanticipated is, I don't think it would be in the good nature of anybody that deals in financials to put a budget out when you're looking at trying to guess the interest rate market. I think you'd be as conservative as you possibly can be for that. Thus, especially in the markets that we've had with tremendous increases in our inflation, which hence, you've also seen on the other side for savers, you've seen an increase from, we were getting a half a percent to now, what are we getting now, Greg, 5%?
About 5.42.
So what happens is you end up having, and for that one line item, you have a surplus. I'll give you another example. So for instance, we get what's called a bond premium. When we go out to market, we get the investor that chooses gives you money to get that particular deal, that interest, right? Last year, that was to the tune of $780,000. So as we're preparing a budget, well before we're going out to the bond market, you can't guess that. So that derives an increase in your surplus. Just those two items alone is $2 million, right? Then we take a look, and I'm just giving some ancillary ones, right? So then we'll look at departments. So good news is, tax collector, right, we collected another $671,000 more than we anticipated. And you say to yourself, well, how did you do that? Well, those are back taxes that we got from, right, Greg? We get them from sales, we get them from people that are leaving, let's just say, and maybe they're not leaving because they want to, but those are all getting put in and paid, those taxes are getting paid. So you can't budget those numbers on something that may happen or may not happen, because what happens if you don't hit that number, then the worst thing happens. You go for what they call a supplemental tax bill. I'll give you another, for instance, the market last year. I see Noreen's over here. Great job, Noreen, in the tax, in the town clerk's office, conveyance fees, strong year last year. We didn't know, like when we're anticipating this market, like right now, we have no idea, somewhat, but really no idea of what our housing market's going to be in the spring of 2025. So you have to give kind of a rough guesstimate. Good news for us is, we did better than anticipated. That was another $87,562.22. Building did a fabulous job, right, with their permits and everything else, lots of solar going on, you have some new construction going on, both residential and commercial. That was another additional $217,931. Best year they ever had. So when you have all these unanticipated revenues, that's going to create a surplus. So the next question I pose everybody is, what do you do with that surplus? I think we do the prudent thing, which is what our investors certainly appreciate, and it helps defer taxes. You get capital items. Instead of putting two plow trucks that cost 200, Mike, Mike's over there, $239,000 each one, you use these unanticipated revenues to pay for your capital, so that you're not going back to the taxpayer and saying, oh, by the way, I have these unanticipated revenues, but you know what? I'm going to go ahead and tax you anyway. And I'm going to give you, for instance, how that impacts the budget, especially for those that are new on the Board of Finance, and those are in the office. Greg, this year we used over $2 million in our surplus, right? For equipment that we need, we had all of our, we had all of our departments come in and talk, not only to the town council, but to this board itself, and also at a town meeting. So Greg, if we were to take that $2 million and put it in this year's budget, what would our taxes be?
It'd be a 5.13% increase.
So by being able to use these unanticipated revenues, that you really don't, you know, I would wholeheartedly not suggest that we balance a budget on interest rates and where they're going to go. I would highly, especially in times that we have, such as these, that are in flux, I would highly suggest that you don't jack up your revenues on a building department, because you don't know what's going to happen with the national economy, especially the state. So you try and do a balancing act, and then you do the appropriate thing, which is if you have those additional revenues, you put it in your capital reserve, or what we've done too, Ellen, which, and those are in here, too. We've actually done what's called mil rate stabilization. So we've taken a portion of this, we put it aside for exactly that, to stabilize your mil rate, to use it if we need to. As a matter of fact, Greg, the year before last, we put in, we put in.
Last year?
Last year, we put in as much the year before.
1.788.
And 1.788 was the difference in the taxes increase of the public. Am I correct, Greg?
Yes.
So basically, we took that and put it aside for mil rate reduction. And I'll tell you what, and Greg has been on these calls same as me, the investors love it. They love it so much, even though we're a double A two town, we can't be a triple A because of the, we're not in a big enough MSA, that's a metropolitan statistical area. We're in Litchfield County, so we'll never get, they tell us triple A, I keep fighting for it every year, but you want to know what? The investors sure love us, because we get lower rates on our bonds than people in lower Fairfield County towns, because we do it the right way.
Consistent basis.
Correct.
We're going for bonding in July, we're going to have another ratings review. So having good, solid financials really helps our credit rating. And, you know, Wall Street seems to think that we're doing all the right things. So, you know, we're effectively managing the finances and the surpluses to give us the biggest bang for our buck.
Can I answer your question, Ellen?
Open answer. Open answer.
On that topic, that's actually where I was headed, Walter. To be honest with you, because, you know, the mil rate has remained relatively stable, right, because we have had an explosion in the housing market, and we've had additional revenues, right? So we can have those increases and still offset some of the mil rate. But my question would only be at this point, is, A, as the Board of Finance, we set the milage rate, not at this meeting, but at another meeting, right? And we have the ability to toggle some of those percentages up and down, and at that point, we'll evaluate with Director Osipau the direction that we're headed, because typically we use, what, a five-year rolling average or a three-year rolling average?
Four.
A four-year. Hit both sides, that was close, right?
I don't understand the question.
We use a four-year rolling average, right?
For what?
Oh, to set the mil rate.
No, no.
We don't use an average? We don't go back and look at historically what our collections are?
The percentage that you need to.
I understand. I'm talking about the collections rate. The collections rate, right.
Oh, the collection rate.
The collection rate. We usually look back and we say, hey, last year we collected this, the year before we collected that, next year we can anticipate we're going to be somewhere in between.
Yeah, it's a feel, too, Joe, because, you know, when you set the collection rate and you're calculating the mil rate, that's, the grand list is at one point in time. That grand list moves over the course of the year. So, you know, we get more revenue based upon, you know, and based upon, you know, building, when people build, when people get new cars, that goes on to the grand list. That grand list you see there is as of October 1st.
Now, the pendulum can swing on the opposite direction, too. So for instance, used motor vehicles. So two years ago, right, when everybody was scrambling for a motor, using a motor vehicle, I was one for my kid, right? Those were way up. They've now gone down. So what's happened is? So what's happened is, our motor vehicle, right, tax or our motor vehicle income has shrunk because those values. So there's, as Greg was saying, there's an ebb and flow to values.
But we try to set that as best as we can, right?
Exactly.
Now, this has led me to a question. So the items that were done in the, what did we have, just a few weeks back, right? Maybe a month or so ago, there was a town meeting, and it was approved to make these capital purchases with the surplus monies?
Correct.
None of those items should be reflected in the budget that we're currently voting on.
Correct.
They were all removed from the budget.
Correct.
Right, so that was supplemental from that. Now, is that, is that purchase reflected in the actuals for this year? The actual, like when we're looking at the actual?
The purchase for what?
The supplemental appropriation purchase. Where is that shown?
You mean for, out of capital reserve?
Yeah.
No, that's a separate fund.
It's a separate fund.
That's in the cap, that's in the capital reserve fund. This is, the actuals are for general fund only.
General fund only. And that's, and that's what you gave me, and you gave to everyone else?
Yep.
Okay.
Because that's what we're discussing. We're setting the mill rate for the general fund.
But Joe, I, I'm sorry.
The surplus goes to the capital reserve fund.
It goes, it goes to several places. Sometimes we, you know, as our budget grows, we have a fund balance policy, and we try to maintain two and a half months' worth of expenditures off of the current year budget. And as the denominator grows, if you will, our budget gets larger, you on occasion have to put more money into your unassigned fund balance to keep that ratio stable. So we can put money in our unassigned fund balance, we could put it in the capital reserve, we can put it in a tax relief, assignment of a fund balance for tax relief. Those are usually the three things that we do with the surplus. One of three things, or a combination thereof.
So those purchases aren't accounted for in the budget?
Not in the general fund budget.
Not in the general fund.
Not in the capital reserve budget.
Okay.
Yeah, and what we're voting on is the operational.
Oh, yeah.
Walter, but I can say, for instance, not being in the budget, I mean, I'll give you an example, the two plow trucks, because they're pretty expensive. If it wasn't in the capital reserve, it absolutely would be in your budget, and your budget would be a half a million dollars higher.
But we could also roll the surplus into the budget to offset those purchases. And not being that we're, our budgetary movement is unrestricted, our budget can go up one year and down the next year.
You can't, you can't roll it in that way. The auditors would go wild.
They wouldn't like that.
Okay. Right, Greg? Am I correct?
I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Greg, I'm sorry.
I said, I said we couldn't, we couldn't have those purchases in the budget and use the surplus as tax relief to pay for those items? Like, we could take those trucks, those plow trucks that Pete was talking about.
No, listen, Joe, and council members, you, you vote on this at year end, what we do with the surplus.
Yeah.
It's not arbitrary, it's brought before you, and you, you, both bodies vote on that.
We could vote on it and use that money as tax relief.
Yes.
Or mill rate stabilization, if you like that term.
You could. Tax relief, unassigned fund balance, or capital reserve. That's the typical three ways you use surplus.
And part of that is also set by town ordinance, that we have to have that one and a half, two and a half percent reserve, two and a half expenses in reserve. That's like ordinance.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but also kind of piggybacking on Joe's question as well. When you're looking at, could you put it in a budget? We've talked about this before, now we're on inflationary pressures. So if you wait now, I know the deputy chief is here, if you wait, for instance, if we wait on the police car, what's now the average cost differential by waiting?
It's going up between eight and ten percent per year for a vehicle.
And to get, to get, to get a vehicle, how long does it take now?
It takes about almost eighteen months to get the vehicle on site, and then it has to be painted, and then it has to be outfitted with lights, siren, cages, computers, printers, some of it's done by vendors, some of it's done by our in-house IT folks. So that eighteen hundred dollars per, that eighteen months that it takes to get that vehicle in, prices are shooting up the whole time.
And I'm sure the same would go with Mike with DPW, you have Dan with Park and Rec. So all these material costs, when you look at, when, when inflation was at point, you know, half a percent, one percent, maybe that could be a conversation, but when you're at escalating costs anywhere three to four, five percent on machinery, and then, as you know, Joe, in your business for sure, when you're in business, when you're looking at repairing infrastructure, those prices can jump fifteen, twenty percent. So it's great to pivot.
I can't tell you how often I hear the eight percent is chasing us.
I can imagine.
When we're talking about delays, it's just over and over.
I can imagine. So this way, by using the capital reserve, we can pivot immediately and order, and that way save additional costs.
Mr. Chair. We had a public meeting the last week, and three people spoke in favor of the Board of Education, Bob. Oh, this is just comments on my part. Nobody spoke against the town side of the budget. Tonight, we have three people speaking in favor of the budget. Send it to the people.
Second.
Any other questions? If not, the chair would like to propose an amendment.
I was going to say with the reduction.
Propose the amendment to reduce the town budget by one hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, which will bring a total for forty-six million, four forty-eight, two hundred and fourteen. Greg, can you make those adjustments?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Just give me a second. Okay, I got it.
Is it one seventy-three or one seventy? One seventy?
That results in.
One seventy-three, twenty-two.
Two point seven four increase. It lowers the mill rate from two point nine three to two point seven four.
That's what we're talking about now, is the town side?
Yes.
What we're talking about is the town, town side. Anybody have any discussion on this item? No discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Who in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed to it?
Opposed.
Okay, the town side of the budget is approved with the amendment. Next side is the Board of Education, budget totaling seventy.
Don't you have to approve the original? Don't you have to vote on the original motion? Or no?
No, because we amended it.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion and action on the Board of Education, budget of seventy-three million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Walter. Discussion.
I'm curious a little more than feels about it, given that they had to give up certain positions as part of the budget, whether this money that could be used for other purposes is already, you know, accounted for, but there were some positions, I think there were tutoring positions that had to be eliminated because of funds. It would be nice to see those restored if possible.
I think what's, all right, Ellen, what we're looking at now is talking about the original budget, okay? Not with any potential amendments or savings. And I'm not quite understanding what you're saying.
We're, we're, we're voting on a motion to reduce the Board of Ed budget.
No, no, that is not, that is not what we're doing at this point in time.
Okay, apologies.
No problem, just any discussion on the budget as presented from the town council? Any amendments to that budget?
Do you have a minute?
No, I was talking about the Board of Ed.
To the Board of Ed, or we're still on the town budget?
We're still on the town budget.
No, we're on the Board of Ed budget.
No, we're on the Board of Ed budget. Did you want to add something to the Board of Ed budget?
Yes, I would like to see that money go back in, be used for.
What was the total?
The total potential savings on the Board of Ed is two hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two. But Ellen, before you can amend, do what you're saying, we have to amend the budget by that amount.
Okay.
Okay? So, and the motion is going to be to reduce the Board of Education budget by the amount of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, giving us a total budget of seventy-three million, one seventy-nine, five eight seven. Greg, could you put that up on there? And can I have a second, please?
Second.
And Greg, my angle, I can't read that too well, could you?
And this is the savings from the health insurance?
Would it obey?
Yes, from the health insurance.
I think it's on the wrong line.
Sorry, what did it do for the mill rate?
What's this?
Reduces it to seventy-three million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And the impact on the mill rate would be to further reduce it to two point four three percent increase from the two seven nine.
It doesn't look right to me, Greg, would you scroll back up? It looks like the two eighty-two, nine twenty-two is on the town line, and it should be on the Board of Ed line.
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm looking at it to the left, excuse me, I'm looking at it to the left. Yeah, okay.
I can undo it. Look at, look at the Board of Ed line, how it changes.
I see it now. Yep, I see it now. Yep, I see it now. Yep.
Any discussion on this amendment?
This is to reduce.
To reduce, yes.
Because of health insurance.
Okay, as a result of health insurance savings. Now, Ellen, you want to make an amendment to this?
No, no, I just, as it's discussion, I would, I would not want to reduce the Board of Ed budget, because I think these monies could be used elsewhere for the Board of Ed.
Can I ask a, can I ask a question of the Board of Education, since they're here?
Sure.
Are there particular programs where that two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars would be useful to the Board of Education, where maybe that was cut from the budget during your original round of reductions that the Board of Education did?
That is so difficult. I appreciate the motions, the clarity of medical line, because I know that some in the back may not know what.
Up to the podium, please.
That's a difficult question.
Because we need on the speaker for the people that hope to hear.
Right, for the purpose of the motions that you just took, because those in the back, we basically are taking the seven percent and six percent from the Board of Education on the SPP, and recognizing the three percent drop in the health insurance, so those are the reductions. It's not, those are just health insurance identified reductions in that line item that we saw and are recognizing a savings on. I just want to be clear on that, because I think some people are a little confused and thought it was a further reduction. So, thank you for that. I appreciate that question, and at first instinct, of course, there are things that we could, we could use. I, I will tell you from anybody, and a lot of those who are at the budget, but so can the town. So it's unfair. You know, I, I look at the amendments that the board made, we brought in nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars of reductions before it hit this table, between the superintendent and the board, and it was unanimous, and we're struggling with it, but we have to get to a number that is somewhat affordable. Could we take two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars and put it into something or many things? You could probably get hundreds of opinions of what that would be. That's what our budget process is. The short answer is yes, we could. We could take a portion of it, I could think of many things on my own, and I'm sure that other board members here could easily come up with that. But this is a budget process. This is what the people elect us for, to make the tough decisions. And it's a tough answer, but right now, I think that I'm relieved for the health insurance, that's not enough, but, you know, that could go in another direction. And in other districts where they did not have that, where they can move those numbers around, they have to go back to their town and ask for special appropriation, and we're not doing that. So we have a lot to be proud of, because it'd be a different conversation if we came back to and asked for another, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand after the fact. So the short answer is yes, Joe, there are, there are programs that we could use funds for.
Is there a particular one that's a pain point for the district? That was like increasingly difficult as the process went on? Where you could say, hey, you know what, we could use seventy thousand of that because we lost this very important thing to us that I feel would be super helpful to have in our budget back?
I think as a board collectively, our goal is always to protect instructional core and, and instruction. But there are so many variables around that, and as I, as I said, I have eight other board, seven other board members, and they all could, and of course, the central office staff. I know the superintendent is biting her tongue, because I'm sure that she'll have her list as well, because there's a list that comes to her. So, yes, there are things, there are. And, but it would be unfair of me to throw out one item and not do justice to all the conversations of a year of the Board of Education. And we presented that list before we came here, of some of those, we were looking at ten net reductions, I believe, out of seventeen. So those are ten real positions. It's the real deal. So, yes, there are.
Wendy, hold on a second.
Oh, gee.
Would it be fair to say, if you had this figure for health insurance to two hundred and eighty-two, nine two-two, when you finalized your budget, the budget would be the amount that we're talking about now, the amended budget? Or would you still be at the seventy-six?
I'm not sure.
Seventy-three, excuse me. In other words, if you knew the cost of the insurance line would be two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars less than what you put in there before, if you knew that number, that's the number you would have put into the budget?
I don't know about that, because basic, I, I think so, but I.
For that line item, yes, but for the overall budget, yes.
Yes, I, I, I think that we worked very hard to come up with recognizing a possible savings in insurance, to get to a digestible number. But that's what budgeting is, it's eighteen months in advance. You don't know. You know, so if your question is, if we knew that we would have two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars sitting there to quote "use" in our budget, I still think we have a fiscal responsibility to bring forward what we believe in. Could we have used a portion of it? Yes. Yes?
Any further discussion on this amendment? Okay, when we vote on the amendment, I want to make sure people understand, we're voting on a new budget for the Board of Ed. We can amend it after that if somebody wants to make an amendment now, before we vote. Does anybody, no, excuse me, I said that the wrong way. The only way that we could have amendments after this vote is if the vote is defeated. The motion is defeated, then we go to the next process of where we want the budget to be.
All right, Walt, you're leaving me behind. The amendment is to reduce the budget.
Correct.
Okay.
If that is passed, then we had the budget.
Right.
If that is defeated, we go through another amendment process.
Which is the original.
Whatever, whoever puts in the next amendment or motion in. Yes, it could be that, Walter. It could be just leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Okay? So, what we're voting on is if this amendment, if it passes, we have a Board of Finance budget in the amount of seventy-three million, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and five hundred and eighty-seven, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Although in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you raise your hands, just so I can?
Aye.
We have three.
Are you in favor?
Abstaining.
At four, Walter.
Who was the three? At four.
At four.
Three.
Can you raise your hands? Oh, so, okay, Brian? He can't vote, he's not seated.
No.
He's not, he's got his hands up.
Okay, Mr. Abstaining at the moment.
Okay, I abstain, that motion doesn't pass, so we're going to go visit the budget. Does anyone have another amendment on the budget?
I would assume that someone who voted against it would have a revision.
Yeah, exactly.
So someone needs to speak up.
You got to make, I need a motion on-
Motion to approve the Board of Ed budget as it was originally proposed to the Board of Finance.
I'm sorry, Joe, say that again.
No changes. Motion to approve the Board of Education's budget as it was presented to the Board of Finance from the town council.
Second.
Ellen, did you say your second? Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please raise the hands.
Brian's not.
Joe, no. So we got one, two, three, four. Opposed? Two. I abstain. We have four, majority, that's what's needed to pass the budget. Board of Ed budget is passed as originally brought here by the town council. That concludes our business for tonight. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submove, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.